We're getting some progress. So let's say we're live. Planning Director, I'll be here.
I will do that. Commissioner Brothers. Commissioner Krasinski.
Here.
Commissioner Cottrell.
Here.
Commissioner or Chair Golden, who is absent this evening, and Vice Chair Tard.
Present.
We have four commissioners and a quorum for action.
Excellent. Thank you so much. But before we get into the agenda, it's time for oral communications for those people who are present or who are present online. This would be the opportunity to raise issues that are not presently agendized. Come forward and be heard. Unless there are people who are... Do you have anybody who is present?
It appears that there is one person on Zoom online, Rita Coman. She's had her hand up.
Hi Rita. I can't...
Hi.
Hey.
First, I want to tell our interim planning person to welcome to our beautiful town. And it was very unfortunate that most of the town missed out on your presentation last week because of, I guess, web infrastructure issues. And I really hope that tonight we get to see part of your presentation during your staff part of the meeting. So glad that all of you are there. And we can't really see the dais in the, you know, in the photos on Zoom. So if that particular camera can come on, I see Thomas and Mr. Biggs. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there others present either online or present in the old schoolhouse who would come forward and be heard on non-agendized items?
It looks like we have nobody else online in Zoom with their hand raised. I also recommend speaking through the microphone so that the cameras can pick up whoever is speaking.
Do you recognize that we have a council member here who's... Are you are the... Are you our liaison? Excellent. It's very nice to have you here. And I've got to say, as a personal matter, it is really nice to be back together. I was not able to be present at the last meeting. I was in... I have no idea. But I was on travel and it was important. But it's so nice to be able to do this. It's been months. We have one item here before us. That pertains to a request for an exemption for utility undergrounding at 450...
Mr. Chairman?
Golden Oaks in...
I was going to suggest that, given that we have one member of the commission that needs to abstain from this next item, that you move up Agenda Item Number Four, Approval of Minutes, to before your consideration of the application or exception undergrounding so that you have more members that can take action on the minutes.
You know, I was so excited to be able to get in to become business in order to completely provide...
No problem.
So why don't we do that? I am abstaining from the minutes present. But are there comments or corrections to the minutes that should be made?
I have one comment. My last name is spelled Brothers, like brothers and sisters. And about half the time in the minutes, I'm Commissioner Brother, who I'm sure is a close relative. I picked up in spell check. And, you know, I've overlooked it in the past, but this time it popped up a bit more. So it's obviously clear from the context what it's meant. Otherwise, I thought they did an excellent job on the minutes. We had a lot of discussion on that SB 330. And for my part, they kept it as well.
And on that same theme, I just had John Goulden's name was misspelled, I think, every time. So it's G-O-U-L-D-E-N, not I-N-G, since he's not here. But that's all I had.
Right. I have one thing I just... I did catch the John's. I wanted to... On page 81, like where we were talking about the, I guess it was SB 330 and the number of meetings. Under my comment, it was recorded Commissioner Krasinski said eliminating the subdivision committee meeting made sense and agreed that there had to be joint sessions. And then he recommended the joint sessions be two committees. And I felt like that didn't quite capture the substance of my recommendation. So I wanted to add on to that that I had specifically recommended that the meetings would be, one, Trails and BPTS; two, Conservation and ASCC; three, Planning Commission; four, Town Council; and then a fifth meeting that could be a wild card depending on...
Let me pause for a moment and make sure that Biggs has that.
We have that correction noted along with the other corrections to the spelling of the names.
Thank you. Are there any other items which should be corrected? Hearing none, I think that we should enter in a motion. Do we need public comment? We do need public comment. We do need public comment. Thank you. Are there any members of the public who are either present in the old schoolhouse or who are present online who would like to raise comment with respect to the minutes? Hearing none, then we are now in a position to move forward. And the motion should be one.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes with the few changes that we had to the September 6th meeting.
And it's a second?
A second.
All in favor? We actually need to go and do this, I think, because are we doing this as a roll call? Or are we doing this as a...
You can ask for all those in support of the motion, say aye, and then all those against.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, there are none, and part obscene. Three, two, two, zero, one. All right. Thank you. So we're going to move on to the first and only agenda that's before us. I want to note that Commissioner Cottrell may wish to recuse herself, but I understand that she does.
Yes, that's correct. I live within 500 feet of the applicant's project, so I'll recuse myself.
And you could either stay with us here or be outside or decide that this is a matter that you do not need to be present for in addition to the remaining issue. And we look forward to seeing you when that's due me.
Sounds good. And I'll join by Zoom, but as a resident, not a participant.
Safe right home.
Yes, very nice meeting you. Thanks.
So the item during our regular agenda is a request for an exception to the utility undergrounding of 450 Golden Oak Drive by the residents. I'm going to ask them to introduce themselves happily here, following a staff report on the issue. I'd like to note that we have seen issues like this come up before. And it's probably worth revisiting during the discussion what that history has been and at some point that's in the direction that we would want to think about as a matter of policy going forward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We do have a presentation for you this evening. And here to give our presentation is Jake Garcia, one of our consulting planners who has been working with the applicants on the project and is ready to share with the commission some details about the project and staff's recommendation. Jake, I see he's online.
Great. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, members of the commission. My name is Jake Garcia. I'm a consultant planner for the town of Portola Valley. And the item before you tonight is an exception request to the town's utility underground requirement at the property 450 Golden Oak Drive. The subject property is located on the south side of Golden Oak Drive. And the lot was created as a part of the Alpine Hills subdivision in May of 1955. It is in the residential estate, one acre zoning district. And surrounding properties are one and two-story homes located in the same zoning district. Currently, there are two building permits. One has been issued and the other one is in review for the subject property related to the item tonight. The issued permit for, the issued permit is for two heat pumps and a heat pump water heater. And the second permit in review is for solar photovoltaic system. According to the homeowner's request letter, the homeowner seeks to use the sustainability of their home by switching to solar and replacing outdated gas and gas-powered furnaces and water heaters. Proposed improvements would require the electric service to be increased from 200 amps to 400 amps. The required undergrounding is shown on your screen in red and the existing above-ground services in green. The required trenching would result in 193 lineal feet of trenching between the nearest utility pool and the onsite electrical panel at the front of the residence. The electrical service upgrade triggers the town's code requirement that overhead service onsite be relocated in the underground trench. However, town code also allows for exceptions to this requirement if the planning commission determines the requirement is not feasible or practical and no reasonable alternative location or design for installation has been identified. The homeowner submitted an exception request on October 6th, 2023. And according to the homeowner's request, the required trenching necessary for the undergrounding of utilities is not economically viable and would not, would result in detrimental impacts to the existing significant trees. They provided a project narrative, quotes from the proposed work and quotes for the work associated with the undergrounding of utilities. And then Iver's report that details the affected trees and potential health impacts as a result of the undergrounding. Starting first with the project undergrounding cost, the homeowner has provided a quote of proposed work totaling approximately $256,089 and includes the cost of two heat pumps and two water pump costs and installation of $48,499 and the cost for the solar voltac system and installation of approximately $207,590. The homeowner also included a quote for the anticipated work for the undergrounding of utilities totaling $262,071 and includes the PG&E cost as well as cost provided by the contractor for trenching of the project. And this is based on the estimated 192 feet of trenching distance required onsite to satisfy the town's undergrounding requirements. Thus, the additional cost, burden of the strict application of the town code to the homeowners equates to roughly a 102% increase in the overall project valuation. The Iver's report provided by the applicant has identified 15 trees within close proximity to the required utility undergrounding, 13 of which are considered significant and in good condition. Two, which are non-significant, have been identified as dead trees and recommended by the Iver's for removal. And the project has indicated that the required undergrounding would be within the critical root zone of the 13 significant trees and would be detrimental to the tree's health and stability. And in advance of this meeting, a public notice was sent to all neighboring properties within 300 feet of the site on October 20th. And no comments have been received to date in advance of this meeting. And in accordance with town code and planning, the planning commission has the authority to grant an exception to the requirement if they determine that the underground installation is not feasible or practical and there's no reasonable alternative location or design for the installation of the underground lines. Historically, the planning commission has used the determination of undergrounding costs relative to valuation size of project, undergrounding, trenching potential impacts on trees and complications due to physical conditions such as slope, underground utility locations, et cetera, as grounds for the granting of the exception. Staff concludes that this exception request falls under both the tree impact and high-cost categories of determination. Therefore, staff recommends granting an exception to the undergrounding requirements given that the location of existing trees and the additional cost burden to the app can't make the requirement not feasible or practical and there's no reasonable alternative location or design for the installation of the underground lines. The planning commission should make the motions. But we recommend that the planning commission make the motions that are on your screen tonight. That is the end of my presentation. If you have any questions for staff, we're available. And the homeowners are there in the schoolhouse tonight and they are available to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
So can I ask if there are any questions or clarifications of staff?
Yes, very definitely. The word is practicable. And that's a common word in statute. And when it's paired with the word feasible, as it is in our statute, it means very clearly a question of cost. You'll find this throughout the Clean Water Act, Clean Air Act. You'll find this throughout local zoning laws and everything. So it does become a question of cost just on the basis of the statute. So you gave your four or five reasons. Some of those reasons then related it to the cost of the actual project. It should be the cost of the exemption that we're being asked to grant. And in my mind, it should be the cost compared to... This is a question, but in my mind, it should be compared to what if we don't give the exemption. So the proper comparison to me would be if we don't... One alternative is to underground the line and we have the cost of that, $262,000. What we don't have in our package, and this is my question, what would be the cost of doing this upgrade if they go through the existing line? There's a pole on their property. I go by today. Does the pole have to be replaced? And how many of these costs are related to the upgrade itself as opposed to the undergrounding? I was not able to find that information in our package. So I kind of have a premise problem with the presentation.
I can clarify the cost of the project without the requirement of undergrounding and the cost of the project with the undergrounding requirement. And that's provided by summarizing the quotes provided from the applicant to support their request. On page five of the meeting packet, there's a breakdown of project costs on Table 1. That's the cost of the project without the requirement of the undergrounding of utilities. And that comes to a total of $256,089 or $256,089. And then with the additional cost of utility undergrounding, it would increase by $262,071, leading to a total project cost of $518,160.
My question goes to what's in that charge? Because the charge says the heat pumps and insulation and the PV system and insulation. Whereas if I go to the cost of undergrounding, there's a PG&E connection. There were some additional boxes. I know because when I put the solar voltac on my house, I had to put extra PG&E costs. So I'm trying to figure out if every single cost that's attributed here to the undergrounding requirement is only necessary if we're undergrounding or if in fact some of that is necessarily just by the increase in amperage. That's the question I'm trying to get to. We're being asked to give an exemption to the undergrounding and the applicant has made a decision to do the increase in amperage. And I'm looking at the delta on the undergrounding versus the increase in amperage.
You're looking for true apples to oranges.
Yeah.
Apples. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And this unclear.
I have a statement to make, but for now, I'm trying to get the question answered. And then I can...
So if I can ask Mr. Garcia whether you can respond to that in feeling that that may be a question that's most appropriately responded to by the applicant?
So the costs that have been provided for the heat pumps and installation was provided as a quote from the applicant. But it sounds like this is not what you are necessarily looking for. You know, as the result, I guess, the result of the heat pumps and installation as well as the PV system is the trigger for the increase in amps of the service being provided to the site from 200 to 400 amps. And that would be the reason for the requirement of the undergrounding of utilities. I guess I would request a little bit more clarification on the cost that you're looking for if it's not summarized in those amounts there.
Well... What I don't have are the costs associated with bringing in the increased amperage if they're not undergrounded. I don't have the cost. I don't know if the pole that's on their property will be retained. I don't know if new wires are going to go in. I don't know if new transformers are going to go in. I don't know, for example, if all of these PG&E fees will be necessary with or without the undergrounding. There's a $4,800 when I'm looking at the consultant's, the construction consultant's numbers here for a junction box. I don't know. All of these have been attributed to the undergrounding. But I'm interested in what's undergrounding as opposed to bringing in the increased amperage. And I don't have that in the materials, as best I can tell. And you're confirming that it's not in the materials.
So I think that's helpful clarification. If I can ask if the applicant can respond, please. And it may be best if you actually speak from the dais simply because the folks back home will want to be able to hear you well. If you can introduce yourself, please, or yourselves, please.
Through the chair, we are unable to hear anything from that microphone.
Is that the, there's a center?
Can I try again? Can you hear now, Jake? It's better?
Yeah, yes, that is much better. Thank you.
So thank you for your time. Marcus O'Gregory is my name. I'm here with my wife Najette. We both own 450 Golden Oak Drive. Mrs. Brothers, thank you for your question regarding the cost difference. I think this is what you would like to understand. So without rolling up all the, how we got here initially, we had contact with PG&E. Because initially, our solar company contacted PG&E about this amperage upgrade. And the initial contact with PG&E, they investigated basically the capacity of the transformer we are connected to. And they gave us a lot of indication already and said, this should be no problem. The transformer, there's only two houses connected to the transformer. So there's no transformer upgrade necessary. The only thing that we need to do, they said, is somebody needs to come out to walk the line to see whether the line is in good order and whether it can carry the 400 amp service in the future. So from this point, actually, everything came to a halt because then it was directed to the local team and the local team contacted us. And they basically told us, okay, we are laying out this one and a half years timeline that included construction planning, the solution design for this upgrade, including elevation plans, the Iver's plans, and so on and so on. So and the whole timeline would be one and a half years. But we got already the indication from PG&E that if it would go overground, the mast is fine. The transformer, it has enough capacity. The line might be changed. So we investigated this a little bit to compare the cost. And we would need to replace our main panel where the power comes in. And to bring in a 400 amp panel is probably between $3,000 to $5,000. Plus, replacing the line by PG&E, I expect it to be another maybe $2,000, $3,000. So I believe that the cost comparison that you're looking for is something between probably $7,000, $8,000 doing it overhead where there's $200, close to $260,000 that the estimate came in. And so for us, what would happen if we have to underground it? We would have to stop this project. We simply can't afford this. We cannot pay another $260,000 to dig up our property. That's simply our situation right now. Thank you. I hope I'm answering your question.
Well, you're certainly headed in the right direction, but we don't have that in any concrete form. Is that right? We just have your observation and your estimates.
Well, in fact, when it comes to the electrical cost, it's very hard to get an offer or quote from PG&E. PG&E will not give any quotes. And so even the electrical cost that is in the current offer, the current quote for the trenching, it was estimated based on best practices by the construction company. And they estimated it around $37,000 just for the electrical PG&E cost. For, you know, the conduit, the wiring that needs to happen and the work that needs to be done in order to put it underground and install in the main panel. So all of this is basically right now based on estimates that the construction company is doing.
So where, so the 37.5 is unique to whether you have an underground line. It's not necessary if you have an above-ground line?
It's not necessary because you don't have this thick plastic conduit that needs to be glued together, that needs to be sliced, it needs to be all installed as to code. And PG&E would do it themselves, you know?
And do you know if that pole will, do you want to keep that pole? I go by and saw that pole on your property, or will there be an upgrade that pole required for the higher level?
No, the pole is fine. There's no need to change anything on the pole. We would leave the pole as it is. It looks healthy. It looks strong. We just hang a different line.
It says estimate from your construction company, the PG&E junction box at the street, 4,800. That was still, whether you underline or not, you'll have to pay that. Is that right?
This is a junction box at the street?
It says PG&E junction box at street, 4,800.
I don't think we need this junction box. No. I would say no because we are tapping into the same connection of the transformer. There would be no junction box that leads the wires down into the soil, you know? I think this is the junction box that you're referring to.
I'd like to know these numbers with some... Okay, that helps explain it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other? Are you? Oh, sorry.
I have another question about the comments about using the CADAX under CECL, but it's going to be more of a statement. If we're not undergrounding a line, we can't use the CADAX. If we're not undergrounding a line, you can't use the categorical exemption for undergrounding a line. That's the one, the one CECL. You need not make that as a question.
Yeah, let's let's bring that over in discussion and I think
Then I'm through with my question.
Have to nerd out together uh on CECL. I think you can get there from from here, if that's what we want.
Uh, Jake, uh, the um, so in in the in the mini code itself regarding the exception, it says uh the planning commission may establish policies for the administration of this paragraph. And I guess I've gathered that we don't have, we haven't done that. Is that correct?
That that is correct.
Um, and then, so for the recommendation that you make, you do you have a a threshold either in terms of cost or the other factors? Like, how do you? How did you decide to make your recommendation?
Uh, this was uh based off of prior uh exceptions uh that have been reviewed by the planning commission and uh and have been approved in the past. Uh, so um the increase the cost are comparable um to other projects as well as uh, you know, citing uh the impacts the trees as as presented from a certified arborist. And so the those are uh generally the basis for the recommendations there.
So the the prior projects that have been that were the exception have been approved, were they also in the range of a hundred percent cost increase or were any of those maybe much lower or?
The most previous one was uh approximately a hundred and forty percent increase. Um, the I don't know that I have many others that I can reference off the top of my head other than that one. Um.
Okay.
So I wouldn't be able to give you a very straightforward answer at this time.
And I I don't know if this is easy to answer or not, but why does the town have an undergrounding requirement? Is it driven by aesthetics or fire safety or general mo- modernization?
Um, if I if I may, we looked at that issue before. Uh, and the clearest explanation is based on aesthetics. On the other hand, there are obvious uh other implications uh involved in fire safety as well, which could serve as a basis. Looking at it facially, which is the way that when we look at it in the first instance, but if you look at the 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 minutes of the council decision, it was driven primarily by aesthetics.
You're referencing the previous exception?
We've spent an awful lot of time on this particular set of issues previous, like the reference to the issue of that policy, I think, is a interesting uh issue and one that we should discuss as well.
Ronnie, Ronnie reminds me of the question to go ahead.
Okay. So on the on the bottom of page ten, uh describing when the local PG&E team came out, yeah, they said that they would need to check the power line due to being more than a hundred feet away from the transformer and eventually need to upgrade it. And I guess it wasn't clear to me is eventually need to upgrade it in reference to the power line or the transformer. And then I guess what also wasn't clear is if if they get, if we go forward with the exception exception and the project is completed, would would that resolve what needs to be upgraded or will it remain as eventually moving to be upgraded?
But I would defer those questions to the applicant as that's uh specified in their narrative. Um.
Thank you for your question. So the transformer was um was checked already. It doesn't need an upgrade. The line wasn't checked yet. And so the line would need potentially, and I I anticipate it would need to be upgraded because sending two hundred amps or a four hundred amps over this distance, it probably needs to be a thicker line. Slightly thicker line. And so I anticipate that this line will be upgraded if if we receive this your approval, of course. But there's no work on the transformer to be done except reconnecting the new lines.
Got it. Thank you. That's all my question.
Ronnie reminded me of one more question. Um, Jake, when I look at the arborist report and the map in the arborist report, they compare the trees to the existing line, not that the proposed trench, which was a little troubling, yeah, at least in their photo, in their sketch. And it was hard to tell when I went out and looked at the property data. In fact, you planted a lot of new trees in in the area where the proposed exempt, where the proposed construction be. But did you catch that when you did your review? And and so it made me question the conclusions of that report and I I didn't look carefully to see it, but it seemed to me that that a number of the trees that were that were commented upon were under the existing line, not in the proposed area for the trench. You can pull up the page number if you need to, but
Yes, in their diagram, they only have the existing electrical line there and not the under the the red proposed underground trench there, um, which if the arborist was basing off the existing line, they'd be basing it off the above ground lines and not the underground lines. So um that would be potentially impactful to their final conclusions on what trees are being impacted.
The, I may have a comment about the question.
Yeah, well, basically, the 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 arborist report comments on trees and your existing line and not the undergrounding right away. Where, did you notice that?
So the um, the arborist evaluated various routes. How could we get effectively, it's connecting two points from where the mast is to our main panel. So even if you would, uh, and and when you look at this map, you know, it looks relatively big on the map, but it's that's a difference of probably about twelve to fifteen feet maximum. So um, Ms. Brothers, if you visited our property, you might have seen that there are really big, big trees standing there. So these these oak trees. So we would either go right hand side that would be following the current line would be right inside next to these big trees. Or taking the red line would be left inside next to the big trees, which is closer to the newly planted oak chart that we have set up there as well that you might have seen. Independently, whether we go right or left, whether it's the red or the green line, we will penetrate through these roots that are next to these trees. And then when it comes, when we lead to the main panel, you see that there's a whole cluster of many blue oak trees and this is all the trees that the arborist has evaluated and try to find where is maybe the best route. But there's there's, these trees are very, very dense. They're close to our property. And um, any route that we will take through this, through this meadow will will penetrate through the trees. We would probably take some precaution that will increase the cost, I believe, if we start uh digging through there in order to preserve roots, if you want to preserve these trees. And this are many blue oaks.
I I trust you and I want to be supportive of you as as a neighbor, but I have to make a decision based on the documents before me.
Yeah.
And I I could show you the documents before me that evaluating trees don't show the proposed trench. So while you seem like a smart and knowledgeable guy, the paper before me doesn't substantiate that. That's what I'm trying to get at with my questions.
Okay.
Is what what exception do I have to make to the paper to make my decision? Or do I need new paper um to to substantiate the decision?
May I ask which paper is this if you're looking at? This is the
This is the
Arborist Report?
Arborist Report.
Okay. Commissioner Brothers?
On our red number page sixty six.
And you are comparing it to the trench that was?
On your construction, your Mountain View Construction Company
Yeah.
trench.
Yeah.
Has a red line that more or less wouldn't along your driveway. I I was on the road, so I couldn't see your house.
Yeah.
Sort of figure out that I can see your driveway, figure that.
Commissioner Brothers?
Through the chair.
The draw the commission's attention to page looks like sixty seven with the map that's there. It's the the green lines appears to represent the underground, the trench to underground the lines. And then I do see that the arborist on pages sixty eight and sixty nine, talking about project plan review, does specifically talk about impacts to the trees root zones by proposed installation of an underground utility line. Um, and then on page sixty nine about uh the second paragraph, he he gives his recommendations where he says he strongly recommends reconsidering the plan to underground electrical.
My concern is he calls the green line underground line, but the um contractor, yep, something in London from that. How is the underground line in a different location?
Oh, okay.
I can't tell him the scale on documents also.
Does the
Yeah, sir, um, on your screen is the arborist report evaluated line, which um Commissioner Brothers is correct, represents the above ground line um demonstrated by the contractor and that was shown in the PowerPoint that presentation this evening. Um, so the this is for reference, the arborist um report that numbers the trees of concern within uh proximity of the above ground line. And I'm switching over to the PowerPoint presentation, which shows the red line that that deviates uh from the green line where it is closest to the pole. Um, it switches to the other side of the twenty inch oak and the cluster of oaks about mid property and then and starts to come back towards uh the residence where it connects to the uh the plate panel. Um, so there may be not as many trees impacted or different trees being impacted or less trees. It is a bit, um, I guess inconclusive in in that sense. Um, but it does still end in proximity to trees that have been referenced by the arborist report, but I I think that Commissioner Brothers, your point has been taken. That that it's not evaluating the same two lines.
Are there
Yeah.
other other items, other questions? Have either staff for clarification?
I think those are the only clarifications I wanted to do.
Other uh questions uh or clarify? I'm hearing it, but of my perspective, um I think that there are um there are items that could be, I appreciate your intention to do each other. So that's late and further during deliberations. Uh, if no further questions, uh, we should open a public hearing. Uh, at this point, are there people present? Uh, or a person present in your schoolhouse or online who would uh like to report their best opinions?
Uh, there are three participants online through Zoom uh who have their hand raised. Um, there's Dave Cardinal, Karen and Rita Gomez.
Can you uh call them please in uh order?
Uh, this is David Cardinal.
Dave? Yep, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, perfect.
Perfect. Um, I I I'm not entirely familiar with the situation, but I do live uphill. I did read the entire packet today. Um, big picture. Basically, it sounds like it's going to cost the applicant a quarter million dollars to make their home a better place. As opposed to running an overhead wire that already goes where it goes. They're going to have to bring in bulldozers and trenching equipment and uh make a mess out of the street for a couple of months, which we always hate. Um, and I'm not sure it gets us anything. So I understand that we want to put wires underground and that we have rules and all that, but I don't, I don't see that we're gaining anything in this case by making them spend an extra quarter million dollars to take an overhead line and make it twice as thick instead of like making a huge bunker mentality thing underground. So I'm, I I'm pretty good with them, frankly, going ahead and and just keeping what they're doing and good for them that they want to put in a ton of solar and heat pumps and cars and that's kind of what I think we want to encourage. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Uh, next up is Karen.
Hi, this is Karen Batra. Um, I just had some small thoughts about fire safety and um, just encouraging this project and other projects for sustainability. So in this case, to me, it's, this is not a remodel of aesthetics. It's really trying to make their house and, you know, helping us all out as a community. In terms of fire safety, I don't really think the line from PG&E into the house is a giant risk, but I what I would recommend for the commissioners to consider for um evaluating an exception would be to have the a fire marshal go out there and perhaps suggest that maybe some trees need to be trimmed near that line or and have that as part of the approval process. And that was just sort of my suggestion. Thank you.
Uh, lastly, we have Rita Gomez.
Hi, Rita.
Hi, I thank you for taking my comment. I don't know the applicants, uh, but I I am aware of the last couple of times that um there have been this particular uh issue with um looking for exceptions for undergrounding uh coming to the town. Uh, there were two, I think there were two that were part of the agenda. I can't remember when. Um, but the came down to uh the planning commission saying that uh before we do this again and and both of those were not approved. Um, maybe one of them was approved, but both of them definitely were not. And uh, before it was to come up again, that the planning commission would be writing up a policy because there wasn't a clear policy as um the commissioners have mentioned uh this evening. And so I know that some things are are um haven't moved forward the way that we would have hoped at by this time. But um, you know, perhaps this is something that can be uh looked at again. Uh, you know, not to take away anything from the applicants, but there's a reason why uh this became something that the town chose and perhaps we need to reflect on those original reasons. Why, uh, if somebody was increasing the power that we did say that those wires needed to be underground um and and look at it from a whole town's perspective and not to take away anything from these individuals, but to look at the reasons why and to uh move forward on having a consistent policy for for everyone in the town. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was uh Rita Gomez. Um, if uh going forward, if you can state your name addresses, that'd be helpful, particularly uh for the forthcoming minutes of the transcriber. Give him or her a fighting chance. Um, uh, are there any further uh comments at this point?
Nobody else on Zoom?
All right. Well, in that case, we are going to take it back and would you like to put this on?
Sure, I'll go ahead. Um, I will say I wasn't on the board for those or the commission for those prior uh circumstances. But I will object retroactively if you're comparing the cost to the overall cost of a project. I think that cost to be a cost compared to an alternative. The word practicable refers to that decision to give an exemption or not to give an exemption. That's in our code. And that's just a clear interpretation. You could say practicable. And that's just a clear interpretation. You could say practicable is part of how much of a larger project. But in my mind and in most legal scholars' minds, which I'm not, it's really compared to the alternative. So it's a question of underlined or not underlined. We don't have that in our package. So I'm sympathetic to our neighbors. I'm sympathetic to the added cost. I'm a little frustrated that I have to make a decision on a package that doesn't support what I consider the necessary data to make that decision. I'm bothered by the fact that the tree Arborist report is for an existing above-ground line and not for the proposed underground line. So I'm I'm troubled. I will say I live at the ranch, Potella Valley Ranch, and everything is underground. And I don't know, again, what discussions the board or the council had, but has a huge number of advantages for fire for sure. Also for wildlife. And quite frankly, in a town where the power goes out all the time, if main line doesn't go out, we have power a lot of the time when nobody else does because we don't have that little line from my house to your house that falls down. There are downsides, like when the transformers go out and P G N E has to work all night to get people back on. But some fairly cheap upgrades get done at that point, too. So I I I support the the rule that we have. However, driving through this neighborhood, I was shocked at how many lines there were along the street and shocked that somehow or other that that continues to be the case. So I think in this circumstance, I could see not requiring the undergrounding. I'm not sure. I have to think about whether or not I feel comfortable voting yes without a package. I just reached that conclusion. But I I trust his comments. I think his comments are persuasive, but I but I don't have I don't really have that analysis of the alternative of bringing in the increased. And I suspect it's a little higher than you think because it's probably a tip of what the underground. That's a frustration. Those are really my only comments. I think the meaning of practicable is clear. And it sounds like it hasn't necessarily been incorporated in some of the. If you weren't involved, you could have probably noticed. So I need to think more, but those are those are my the questions showed my frustration or my I want to say frustration showed my ambivalence here about which way to go. I do think even had I where I'd have that information, the cost to go with the above-ground lines will be significantly less than the undergrounded. And I don't find any persuasive arguments to require the undergrounding in this in these circumstances.
Okay, what what is the so the cost of undergrounding would be significantly more or less?
Significantly more than going through the.
So. So their question is, what is the what is the what is the actual number?
Yeah, and I don't like being in the position of having to take the actual number on faith, but I think in this circumstance where the actual number is probably ten percent or five percent of the cost to underground, I'll just swallow my principles. But I'm not voting yet.
Never, never.
I commend applicants for pursuing this project to improve the sustainability of their home. All in all, the recommendation from staff to approve the exemption makes sense to me. Yes, on the points that are troubling Commissioner Brothers. To me, it seems reasonable to compare the cost of the undergrounding as compared to being relative to the project. I mean, I I do think it's meaningful that it more than doubles the cost of their of their project, which, you know, is already a very substantial cost. And, yeah, and I guess while we don't have documentation per se of the exact cost of doing the wiring and the panel upgrade without the undergrounding. Yeah, I mean, it may it seems correct to me that that's going to be you know, less less than ten percent of the cost of of doing the undergrounding. And as far as the Arborist report, I guess, I mean, I did see the map. I didn't have the same. I mean, I guess I I read Arborist report and I kind of pick it on this value that the recommendation is to abandon the project from the Arborists. And I mean, I do see the map that has that line drawn, but hey, I guess it doesn't seem to me that the analysis from the Arborist was restricted to only consider the line, the undergrounding being on that line. Seems like the comments are more to the effect that if if undergrounding of the transmission line occurs anywhere in that area with all of those trees, that it's inevitably going to impact the roots and so on and so forth. So, yeah, I mean, I feel that the Arborist documents supports the. And that's I don't have any further comment at this time.
So I agree that this is a imperfect application. On the other hand, I'd like to point out that it's also in imperfect imperfectly written ordinance and it leaves to this or council the opportunity to create policy around it and that it hasn't policy hasn't been created. Gomez identified one can understand ambiguity and isn't able to produce the kind of record that a particular sitting planning commission might want to see. So I have some sympathy for the applicant in in trying to work with the language that it is. And the recommendation that we made that we go and actually revisit the need for or the opportunity to create policy. And it may be appropriate to make that recommendation to our council liaison who is here. Recognizing that this would be a matter of some value as we end up coming up with the same kind of issues on a ongoing basis, given the value that's been observed in creating for panels and roof that we're likely to see this issue coming up with increased frequency. Through the modification of the ordinance or through development of policy is something that everybody would find a welcome. I think that I can reach the conclusion with or without the increased cost of the of the of of the alignment because of the impact that there would be increase in the root structure. And one of the things that we know is that P G N E will look within those direct line and won't allow meaningful deviations from a straight line to a straight lines. Available. And one can have different views on that, but in a certain sense, it is what it is. One can also have without being overly sensitive to the pre-design and landscaping, there are an awful lot of trees. Different opinions about that, but that would be an issue for the A S C, not for us. It's hard to imagine from my perspective that you would be able to draw an alignment that would be creating impairment for significant trees. Having said that, we also know that P G N E typically would be charging somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred or more dollars or about per linear foot for undergrounding services. I chose to do it myself or with some folks as well because I didn't really want to wait the year that P G N E was proposing, nor did I want to pay the expense of P G N E's contractors to do it. Double loads of soil for us to underground it. We had no trees or other impediments in the way. So recognizing sort of the observable increase in cost and also recognizing the impairment to significant trees that would inevitably be the case and the challenges that are present with the with the ordinance and lack of the policy. I wouldn't have any problem supporting the application as it is right now. The extent that there are problems with it, I might look to ourselves to do the to to the issues that the applicant had.
It's appropriate. I'll make a motion.
Perhaps it is. One other further discussion?
Yeah, I guess in the resolution number one, there is a typo.
My motion's not going to go here.
Okay.
All all right.
If you will.
Is there is there a motion?
I would like to move that rather than what's in our package, which includes the CECL and the engine, I would like to move that we grant the exception to the requirement of undergrounding the utilities. Although it is feasible under sixteen eighteen point thirty-six oh one point capital B point five, it is impracticable because it is about a hundred times more expensive to underground than to use the existing above-ground route. Implicit in that. Explanation is we need to separate the CECL because you know that what's in the package is there. But I my motion includes my rationale, which is different from what was in the package.
So if we may, I'd like to make a friendly amendment. And that would be rather than a hundred times, I would say significantly more expensive.
Accepted.
Is there with that amendment, is there a second?
Is there room for discussion at this point?
Sure.
I guess I I don't I don't know what issue there is with the CECL analysis.
The CECL analysis in our package is a CECL exemption for undergrounding. So if the action is to underground, it's exempt. We're granting an exception to the undergrounding. So there's no undergrounding action under CECL. So that's a problem with that.
So it should be listed as a class one exemption for existing facilities and permanent repairs.
So that's why I didn't put that in our my motion, Ronnie, because what's in our package again is not an accurate reflection of how CECL would apply to our exception.
But you'll be able to get there from from your.
Yeah, totally.
Mr. Chairman, just clarification for staff's benefit. Did the motion, did you want to correct that CECL exemption in the resolution? As part of the motion?
Corrected in the motion, or I was thinking we could have a separate discussion. But Nicholas suggested, but I'm more than happy to use your language. Let's just correct the CECL also. You want it in the same motion or you want it in a separate motion?
I still don't understand. Could you maybe clarify what the change is and what the impact is?
Certainly, the first point is regarding in the the resolution after the now therefore, it talks about the CECL exemption applied or recognized as covering this particular project. And rather than use the exemption that is listed here, we would use what is called a class one exemption, which covers existing facilities, repairs, modernization, those types of things to exist in facilities. So we at the staff would plug in the appropriate CECL guidelines section, the number there, but referred to a class one exemption. Appropriate.
What is triggering that change? Is it is it staff's opinion that that this is an error?
It is, yes. It's it needs to be or should be corrected in the appropriate CECL exemption reflected in the resolution.
Will that change have any impact on the applicant?
No, no, this is this is just recognizing that the appropriate level of environmental review has been applied to the project and the documents what that level of environmental review was.
Okay.
So are there is there further discussion on the on the motion for the amended resolution proposed and for the.
Can we can we review the change that you made? Not not the CECL thing, the other aspect?
The the two items that were amended are one, that we now have a class one categorical exemption. And two, that rather than identifying a specific value of a hundred times more expensive, that it's significantly more expensive as I don't have a record of how much it is and don't want to establish any precedent.
But and that part is changing. What part of the resolution is?
Oh, it's changing because the resolution says that it's no alternative and there is an alternative, which just costs more. That's why it shows my words so carefully. So what are you looking at? Resolution on page seven. You want me to go through it line by line?
Go and do it. Please.
I'm assuming the factual part of. Okay, so paragraph one, the proposed project is categorically exempt. We're going to change that. To say the compliance with CECL will be a class one and we'll take out all the rest of that language. I'm looking at red page seven. That's the proposed resolution that's in our package, right?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so that's what's going to happen to number one. Then number two says the planning commission finds the location of significant trees on site. I didn't include that in my motion and didn't include that wording in my motion. But my motion would have been what's three says it grants the exception to the request in accordance with section three point three six oh one oh five. And I said because while it is feasible, the commission finds it's impracticable. Because the cost of underground. because the cost of undergrounding is significantly greater than using the existing above ground lines.
Are you just adding that to what's bringing it?
Yes. Because it's in here in a different way and it's not stated. It talks about the cost burden, which isn't in the statute. Statute says, um, feasible and practicable. I'm using the words feasible and practicable because that's what we're legally bound to buy. Rather than the alternative location and no reasonable alternative location, that's not part of our statutory duty.
Suggesting to strike where it says additional cost burden to the applicant?
Yes.
And?
And I, my motion did not include the trees and my, the amendment didn't either, so.
What does that mean? Does that mean that?
It's irrelevant, basically.
Deleted or that it would be left alone?
It needed with the deletion of that paragraph two in the red page. I lost my place. Uh, red page seven.
Can I ask Commissioner Tark? I mean, I, as far as I understood, the trees were significant reason for you recording the exception. Is that not true?
It's definitely, it's, it's, it's definitely not true. On the other hand, I don't need it. I don't, there's, there are alternative bases for me to get to the same conclusion, either one of which would be, uh, sufficient for me to get there. If my fellow commissioner doesn't like trees, uh, then I don't need to include it and I'm happy to resolve the issue on the basis of practicability. And we'll really look forward to following this, having a deep discussion on the value of having a policy so that we don't have to have these kinds of discussions going forward. So would, would the resolution be different if I were drafting it? Does it bother me? No. So, yeah, we, we, I, I, and we get to the same outcome and go with the, the other piece of it, the immediate policy. So that's my full rationale.
Okay, thank, thank you for clarifying and understanding.
So with that, we stated, uh, resolution, uh, I am going to ask for a second.
I would second that motion.
We should actually have a roll call vote for a resolution, please.
All right, the motion is to adopt the resolution with amendments. Commissioner Brothers?
In favor.
Commissioner Krasinski?
I guess.
And, uh, Acting Chair Tark?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero. Congratulations.
Yes, please. There is an opportunity to create additional policy or guidance within the, uh, ordinance to provide additional clarification.
It says section eighteen point thirty-six point oh one oh B nine that we're operating under. Sorry, Nicholas.
No, please, please, please.
And the final, the penultimate sentence of that paragraph is the planning commission may establish policies for the administration of this paragraph. Chairman is recommending that we need to establish those policies and I guess we're letting you know.
Well, I, I, I think it's, 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 it's more than that in that is while we're, uh, authorized to do so, it's going to require staff time. And the point, this is a, the indifference to staff and council, uh, we would, uh, request, uh, the ability to, uh, have some of staff's time to develop a policy. Just that, yeah, I'm acting chair, so I, you know, a, a little bit beyond where I would like to be in making a specific recommendation to council. But suffice it to say, we would like staff's time, uh, to be able to review it and we would think that the heavy lifting would capable be handled by the members of the planning commission who would bring it, uh, to staff for their input and recommendations given that they will be administering it long after we're done. And, uh, and then it would come back for, uh, discussion before the planning commission, as an agendized matter. And then doctor will modify it, uh, as per that. That's kind of the the typical structure that one would have for something like this. But again, I'm, I'm only acting, so. That would be my view. And, and there's the. You can't remember. I, I think that your, your points is absolutely well taken and it was after a similar kind of discussion that we had on the previous matters that came before us that we decided it's probably a useful policy that could be put in place. That's, that's, that's what, what, one can imagine that that would be, uh, that, that's, that's be, be beyond, beyond, uh, beyond what we can have an opinion about. Makes sense to me. All right, um, you are, uh, most welcome to stay. Or, or if you have something different to do, sure. We, 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 we won't require your, your continued presence, nor would we take it personally.
Thank you.
So returning, uh, to the agenda, uh, we have, uh, commission, staff and committee reports and recommendations. If I can suggest that we have just made recommendations that could usefully have been seated under here. Uh, are there other commission, uh, reports?
Um, I have none. I, I, I will say it's nice to have you here, John. Really appreciate it very much. Thank you for your help.
All right. Uh, is there a staff report?
Uh, just a brief staff report, letting you know that, um, I'll be serving as interim director until a full-time director is hired and I expect I'll be here until January of twenty twenty-four. So next, in a month and a half, and I look forward to working with the commissioners and, um, would like an opportunity probably to meet with each of you individually and get to know you and hear what your thoughts are about the town of Portola Valley so I can learn as much about the town during my tenure, tenure here as possible. So thank you very much. You're welcome and it's a pleasure meeting you all.
We appreciate your being here. Uh, there was a request, uh, if you could provide a little bit of background on yourself. I recognize that this is, uh, maybe to you unawares. I was also not present, so I was welcome to the opportunity.
Thank you for that opportunity. Um, I have been working in planning and, uh, I guess local government since high school. I started working for a person who prepared environmental impact reports and did the drafting and some of the research that went into those reports. Uh, started off my career, um, with the city of Campbell as a planning intern. And then from there went to the city of Pacific Grove and I worked my way up from being an assistant planner with the city of Pacific Grove to the community development director. And so I was in Pacific Grove for a little over seventeen years. And then from, um, Pacific Grove, I went to the island archipelago of Alameda and worked in Alameda for, for three years as their planning manager, kind of a, a shared community development department responsibility there. Uh, Alameda, I was there from two thousand and seven until two thousand and ten. And then in two thousand and ten, I went to work for the city of Pismo Beach down on the central coast as their community development director. It was there for a little over five years and it was, um, you know, another coastal community, but I think very different from the coastal community experience that I, I had in Pacific Grove. Uh, and then from, uh, Pismo Beach, I went to the town of, uh, Los Altos. And I was in Los Altos for a little bit, um, a little over five years there. First, first community I had worked in in my career other than my internship in Campbell that didn't have a beach. And I kept trying to bring a beach to, to Los Altos, but the coastal commission was having nothing of it. Um, and then I retired at the end of twenty twenty-one and, uh, February of twenty twenty-two, the city of Gilroy needed an interim community development director. So I served in that role for the city of Gilroy for about five months. And then when that finished up, I, uh, continued working for the city manager for, you know, doing a number of special projects he, he had me look into. Uh, and then your new town manager, Sri, asked me, um, with the departure of Laura, if I could come in and serve as interim committee or planning and building director here in Portola Valley. So here I am.
Well, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Uh, we have, um, with no further, uh, staff reports or commission, uh, reports and the minutes having been dispensed with, I believe that we're in a position to improve the meeting.
But did you need to, did you need to do public comment on the, uh, staff and commission reports?
I don't believe we do, no.
Okay, sorry.
But if, if.
I will move to adjourn then.
Would, would, would you like to have comments on that? Here, here, hearing none. Uh, there's a second. And, uh, and are giving the authority and, uh, prepare in, uh, use. Thank you.